We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we need to recess from the regular meeting to hold a public hearing. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay. We have a public hearing on the Code of Conduct and the District-Wide Safety Plan. We will turn it over to you to have Mr. Loomis and I believe...
And Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Robinson.
So we'll start with Mr. Loomis if that's okay. And just so everybody knows, we've spent a lot of time working on the Code of Conduct as a complete team. And Mr. Loomis has been on the front end of that all the way through the year and helped us with a lot of our finessing and things of that sort. Likewise with Mr. Robinson, we met as an administrative team and went through a number of the... all of the parts of the plans and the Code of Conduct. One of the significant things that I'm sure they're going to talk about is that we had some policy review that's been going on and we wanted to make sure that the policies that we've made, that we've either updated or had to update, are meshing well with both the Code of Conduct and the safety plan. So having said that, Mr. Loomis.
Good evening, how are you doing? Are those copies for everyone to get?
I think...
Yeah, these are our... yeah, our copies.
We have copies.
I think you have...
They should have them on their board docs.
Yep. Thank you.
So if you're familiar with the Code of Conduct, this is going to look and sound very similar, but there are some updates. Probably the two most common ones, we changed guidance counselor to school counselor throughout the document. And also, if you are on the second page and it goes into the third page, any list that talks about groups that could be subject to discrimination or harassment, that list has been expanded. It's more inclusive, it's more accurate, and that happens throughout the document. You'll see basically any section that talks about a group, talking about their religious practice, marital status, anything like that, it's all more inclusive throughout the document. Okay? Going through this, if you're on page four, where it says cyberbullying, that is also updated to be more inclusive, more accurate for the things that we see in the school. If you have questions on any of this, please don't hesitate to stop and ask, okay? Corey, if I miss anything, please don't hesitate to stop me either. On the bottom of page five, we removed the names of the staff from the list just because it just makes more sense to add that to the information booklet yearly. Throughout, letter A on page six and letter B on page seven, you see that updated list that I was talking about. And that continues on for the next few pages, the updated list. The next thing that we added specifically for this is on the top of page 10, it's number eight. And this is talking about instructional classroom support staff members. And number eight says, collaborate with the classroom teacher in a professional manner. Prior to this, there was not any language that talked about the conduct that like a classroom aide would have with that teacher. So this is just language that kind of gives us something to work with.
Just so the board, in case your pagination is different, I have it on page nine. F, instructional classroom support members there, right, Artie?
I have it...
Yeah, number eight carries over.
And then it carries over to the next page.
Page nine and then to the top of page 10.
Right, right.
So that's with... okay. At the top of page 11, this is letter I, under the same roman numeral. Dignity for All Students Act has been changed to the Dignity Act Coordinator, which I am holding that title right now. If you look at Prohibited Student Conduct, which is roman numeral six, if we go to letter C, which is on page 13, we talk about student cellphone use. We have updated this, there are changes. We are still eliminating students from using a cellphone in an instructional setting. We have given principals the opportunity to clarify what is and what is not in an instructional setting. And notably, we have also allowed students to use, students in this building, middle school and high school, to use their cellphone in the cafeteria. Prior to this, the middle schoolers, sixth, seventh, and eighth were not allowed to. But part of our thinking is we have to teach them how to use their phones responsibly. And, you know, cellphones are a part of life, so this is something I think more accurately reflects kind of where society is in terms of cellphone use. Cellphones are still not allowed to be used at Townsend. Okay? And I'm not sure if I mentioned this, but principals will set kind of the specifics for each building in terms of what is and what is not acceptable. Also, under prohibited student conduct, we have letter E. Number 10 and number 11, we added possession to both electronic cigarette and tobacco, both things that were gats in this Code of Conduct. We also added possession of vaping devices or vaping paraphernalia. That is to reflect kind of the amount of vaping issues we get on a daily basis in terms of somebody finds a piece of a vape, the cartridge that you put into a vape. So all that stuff is now updated to reflect kind of all of that. Letter F, engaging in conduct on school bus, basically we stated that the district reserves the right to suspend those transportation privileges and that it is exactly that, a privilege. It doesn't have to be something we grant. And it's also, we have in here that the school district will make every attempt possible to make sure that the students' educational needs are still being met, whether it's arranging tutoring, sending work home, whatever it is, that is now added here. The next minor thing I have is page 20, is under number five, under procedures. Page 20, right in the middle, As for the Safe Schools Against Violence in Education Act, that is added to reflect the most current law. Some of the changes I'm going over are minor, we're changing a word or two, so I'm not going to talk to you about that. Procedure after suspension, it's subletter D, page 24. We added that the board and/or superintendent may condition a student's early return from a suspension with a behavior contract or contract of conduct. That's something that was not in here before, and I know that's something that I've heard considered when talking about suspension, so we added that. Page 27, this is roman numeral nine, it's the sexual harassment policy. This has all been updated to reflect the current policy that we have. So this entire section has been added and updated. We have a big gap in here where everything is fine. And then we get to roman numeral 12, page 36. You see the title Corporal Punishment. That, prior to this, was a standalone policy and NISBA has actually recommended, actually mandated that we include that in the Code of Conduct. So this is from, this is language from our old policy that is now in here, per NISBA. Page 37, the second paragraph down, an authorized school official may search a student or the student's belongings based upon information received from a reliable informant, including students. That was not in there, but that's reflecting the law more accurately because we can use a student's tip to search a student's or a district's property that a student's using. Also, on that same page, number 37, right in the middle, the district reserves the right to use K-1 units to inspect district property. That was not in there, that's something that, you know, Rick and I have talked a lot about using more and more in the upcoming school years, so that's something that we wanted to add. The very bottom of that page, letter C, vehicles on school district property, and it continues on to page 38, that is added by NISBA, talking about a school official can search any vehicle on school property. Also, on page 38, letter E, we added that police officials may enter school property or a school function with permission or authorization from the superintendent or his or her designee. And then also below that, a search or an arrest warrant or court order, that we added to be more consistent with policy number 5330. And, you know, we, like Larry said, we determined all of this stuff, working, you know, with Corey, our administrative team and everything, so this more accurately reflects our policies. On page 40, we have just a couple of minor things, but they're worth noting here. Letter B, during school hours, all visitors to the school must sign in and follow the school's procedures, et cetera. We wanted to clarify that during the school hours, they have to go and sign in because outside of school hours, we don't require anybody to sign in. The same set of letters, letter G, all visitors before, during, and after school hours are expected to abide by the rules for public conduct on school property, et cetera. It's added for events such as athletic events. Basically, anything where people gather after school here in this building, it gives us, you know, some teeth to use if they are not following whatever, you know, procedures that we intend them to follow. I believe the last page here, page 44, has a couple more. This is talking about the distribution... sorry. Distributing the Code of Conduct. Number seven and eight, the district expects students to sign and acknowledge, receive, and review of the Code of Conduct, and also, letter eight below it, the policies that are referenced in there. This was added because in the previous version, we referenced all the policies, but we did not have any language in there that said whoever's reading it should also be familiar with that policy. So we did, this is a clarification thing. For example, the previous Code of Conduct referenced sexual harassment policy, but it was never said in there that the person reading it should understand that policy as well. And the very last thing on that page is a list of all the policies that are referenced in this document that you see throughout it, so...
And Artie, those numbers are the numbers of the policies that are going into the new book though, right? Corey?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
So just so the board knows, with all those policies you've been working on, some of them got renumbered, these are those numbers, so, you know, if you look under your old policy book under those numbers, you may not find them, so... Any questions?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
The District-Wide Safety Plan, we actually did not change much of this year. The majority of the changes were name changes and staff updates. So I don't have the entire document here because that was pretty much all of them. The other changes inside that document are just updates to policies that we have all agreed on, and you guys have already done our first or second reading or even approved those documents or policies. So overall, the District-Wide Safety Plan has remained as-is except for staff and name changes. That doesn't mean we sat still this year though, and so we wanted to go over a few of the changes we have done safety-wise, such as we've added a new security system, 80-plus cameras, I think we've gone over this before, but just to summarize, new door access control, new emergency notification system, we've added a new paging system, we've integrated all of those together so that they work as one with our phones and digital signage and our subway signs. We get notifications every time doors are opened or, actually this weekend, John called me at 8:00 AM and we tracked down how a door was left open overnight on Saturday night in a matter of minutes. So all the changes we're doing are working and they're making the school a much safer place for our students, so I think we've had an incredibly successful year. And I think Mr. Thomas shared a white paper with you from Cisco. We're starting to gain national recognition for the work that we're doing here as a team, and that's great to know. So we're going to keep pushing the envelope and moving forward, but that's really all I have for you.
Right. Thank you.
Quite as long as Artie, but, or Mr. Loomis, sorry.
All right, so we will open it up for public comments on either of the plans. Are there any questions or comments about either one?
I don't have...
Okay. We'll get to another public comment then. All right, so do we have a motion to close the public hearing, return to regular session? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay. Approval of the CFC/CPSC recommendations. Do we have any concerns on that or any questions? Do we have a motion if not? Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Here. Okay. We are up to number four, public comment. Does anybody have...
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, board, parents, students, and community members. It is unfortunate that I am speaking tonight having to ask permission for our graduation to be held outside. I, along with our countless other classmates, have completed rigorous coursework with honors, excelled in almost every extracurricular activity Walton has to offer, and dedicated more than just our position as a student to improve the climate of Walton Central School. Each step of the way, I have looked to the Board of Education for permission, for praise, and for promise to make our time as students the best. And I'm disheartened to say that you guys are failing us right now. I apologize in advance because tonight I have to say I hope you guys are in the wrong. As we gather our caps and gowns, we have been told we cannot walk across that stage under the sun. The class of 2019 is one of the most dedicated, hardworking, and diverse classes I believe Walton Central has ever seen, and a proper farewell should be given. We have given our school district an outstanding reputation in sports, extracurriculars, and academics, and yet we feel let down during the biggest moment of our high school career. The decision for the board to eliminate a fair consideration of graduation location depending on weather feels unfair and does not take into account the work, dedication, and accomplishments of our class. The class of 2019, our families and community members have petitioned for the board to allow us this fair decision, one that looks promising to have graduation outside. Each board member elected swore to make the best decisions on behalf of the students, school district, and community. I stand before you one last time as a student, and I ask you to consider our graduation outside. Class of 2019 has not disappointed you throughout the years. Will you be the ones to disappoint us as we leave? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Is there any other public comment?
Hi there.
Hello.
I'm Crystal Jacobs, this is Betsy Drum, we're with the Middle School, High School, PTSA. We just wanted to give you a brief update on our successful year this year, and what we've done. We had our annual cornhole tournament, which was a success. We co-sponsored the middle school spring fling, which was a first for this year, which was...
It was phenomenal, we loved it.
It really did, they loved it, the students loved it. We sponsored fundraising events for the senior class and the junior class, which were very successful. We're very pleased with that. We ran the concessions at the middle school, activity nights, helped chaperone at those events. So we had a really successful year, and we look forward to doing it again next year.
Yep, and some of our goals for next year is to try to have a homecoming dance for the middle school, because they love the spring formal.
They really did.
Hopefully help the advisors a little bit more with fundraising, so it's not such a big push all of a sudden, April, May, June, to come up all this money for prom, senior trips, and maybe we can start it in seventh grade, work our way up, so by the time the juniors and seniors, they've got a little money in the account.
They've got some funding, yeah.
And is always looking for active PTSA members, there's...
Absolutely.
Probably about 20 of us, but four or five of us...
Are very active, so...
All right. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Sure.
Yeah, I'm like the same, feel the same way. We've had our graduation outside, Gail graduated, your son, your son, and they're top class too, you know, as far as being smart, so... Well, they are, like, we used to come to school, whatever, but we aren't like these guys, they worked hard to...
Be careful some...
You know, and there's a lot of people that travel, you know, a long ways to go sit inside and watch it on a TV screen, or, and then I don't even think there'd be enough seats to for a lot of the grandparents. For instance, my father traveled from Florida, so if they had it outside, if it's nice, you know, if it's nice, I'll have it outside, if it's not nice, then have it inside. It's basically how it's always been. And if they need people to help set up, they, you know, have a lot of people that'll help, so, you know, just, that's my opinion, so...
Right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hi there.
Hello.
I just wanted to do a follow-up as to our last meeting. I don't think we gave a total tally of the petition that we had from the community and from the students and staff. We have 178 signatures, many, most of them are volunteering, and I did email you guys with the results of just the senior survey that went around. And we just wanted to know, are you going to be making a decision? Because I had talked with you...
We plan on discussing it this evening, yes.
Okay, all right, so they will know what... do you know when that decision will be announced for the seniors?
Well, the result will probably be after we discuss it.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right, so...
Yes, please.
Yeah, so, I actually had trouble, like, oh, I'm not going to cry, but I had a lot of trouble in high school, and at this moment, I wouldn't think I was...
It's all right, take your time.
I'm going to be graduating, I mean, I showed up really hard. What kept me going was like, for this moment of graduation to walk up and show my family that I'm not the same as I used to be, that I worked so hard and struggled. And I always liked the view of the outside, when my brother graduated, one graduated inside and one graduated out. And Joey's was so beautiful, it was just, and I have really got anxiety, so a lot of people, which I can't believe I'm doing this right now, it's a lot. So I remember for my brother's graduation, even just sitting there and I didn't have to get up, I was shaking so hard sitting there. My mom actually, I know if it's, you know, starting outside, it has to be inside, I will deal with it. But I just want it outside and have everyone that deserves it, it's so hard for us to have a chance because I just think it's fair. Coming from me, which a lot of you guys don't know me, this is a lot, like, a lot. And I just want to say, like, I hope you take consideration because I worked hard on for this.
Thank you for getting up and speaking. Is there any other public comment? Okay. All right, so we are up to number five, possible discussion items. We have the New York State School Board's reception on June 27th. I believe I will be attending. I will probably be in only honor already, so... And, Rand, were you able to attend that evening? Okay. All right, and I don't know, nobody else was able to make it, right?
I'm not in town.
Okay. All right, so that'll be two. All right, and the New York State School Board's Annual Conference, that'll be held October 24th through the 26th in Rochester. Butch? All right, so I plan on attending, and if everybody can check their calendars so we can get a number to Corey as soon as possible. Registration opens July 15th. So if we can get an answer to her by July 2nd, which is our next board meeting.
Right.
All right. And then also, a delegate and alternate for the annual meeting will need to be appointed at the reorg meeting, so if somebody's willing to do that. Also, the Workers' Compensation Self-Aliance, this is something that Butch had always attended. Any other board member could attend as alternates, but we do need to appoint one trustee and then the rest are listed as alternates, correct? If no one else is wanting to do that, I had said I would be willing to do that. And then, anybody else could go. Do we need a motion on that, or is that going to be on reorg? Okay. And as we witnessed the last board meeting and this evening's board meeting, indoor versus outdoor graduation. You all have the information from Mr. Thomas. I guess I have two copies, I must have printed one. All right, and just to confirm, the gym seating capacity is at 1,030, and the auditorium is at 795. I know those questions had come up. What is the pleasure of the board? Does anybody want any clarification on the list provided? And what we have before us is the pros and cons of both. Mr. Thomas, you had worked with the O&amp;M staff and the administrators?
Yes, would you like me to speak to it?
Sure.
So, this topic came up, obviously about a month and a half ago. You start thinking about graduation exercises and things of that sort, end-of-the-year activities. And we had an administrative group meeting, which is all of our supervisors and all of our administrators, we all sit around the table and this table, and talk about issues that are, either problems for us or things that we see coming, or events. And one of the events that we talked about was graduation. And there was some question around the table as to whether we should have it indoors or if we should have it outdoors, and there were folks who, you know, at the table who shared their opinions about things. So, we took down a list and I did ask staff to give me a list of pros, what they felt were pros in favor of being inside and cons against inside. I asked them to do the same thing for if we were outside, what are some of the pros for outside, what are some of the cons for outside? And you have that list there, but, you know, I'll just touch upon a couple of the items. And it's, the folks, and some of it is, you know, qualified opinion, I have to admit, and some of it is qualified based on the expertise of these folks here, and what some of them have gone through in the past and things of that sort. So, you know, certainly opportunities to... the past, and things of that sort, so, you know, certainly opportunities to debate, and we had some debate around the table, but, you know, with regard to, I'll just talk about inside, because it's the first thing that's here, I'll talk about outside in a second. So, with regard to inside, there were concerns that there would be a greater guarantee for the environment, meaning temperature and that sort of thing, good lighting was there in terms of probably the gymnasium, probably the lighting not quite so good, it was felt, for the auditorium area. Quality of the sound and video could be superb on the inside, and, and better in the judgment of the professionals here than on the outside. It could be a safer environment in terms of the ground itself, one of the concerns that was mentioned was that when you have weather like we've got here, and the ground gets incredibly soggy, even on a good day, it takes a while for things to drain, and that there had been times when, if people are seated on the ground, the legs of the chairs can go in and possibly cause an issue for students in their gowns, or even visitors, depending upon where they sit. Seating capacity was generally felt as being good inside, that from what I've been told, there are sufficient seats to go around. The, one of the things for staff here is that, one of the nice things about inside is that, once the ceremony is finished and people leave the room, we can lock up the doors, and we can, and those folks who are working here can get out to whatever other festivities for graduation there are out there as well, so if you have a nephew graduating, or a son, or daughter, then, rather than having to stay on the outside and spending time taking care of those pieces, a setup on, a setup on, in the evening, excuse me, a setup on a Thursday or a Friday prior to graduation also means that we do have to have security there all night, we do have to have someone make sure that things aren't changed on us when we get there in the morning, and so that, that is a concern. Those things do relate to costs for the district, the, and there was also the comment that, that if it is inside, and we do have overflow, and we did go into the auditorium with overflow, at that time, they were talking about the gymnasium, if there was overflow, that, that could easily be streamed to anybody, if some folks used the auditorium, so that, that's not a complete list, but those are a lot of the things that, that were mentioned. Time for, for setting up and breaking down is obviously an issue, and, and to, you know, the kindness of the community as far as helping in terms of either setting things up and/or drying things off in the morning, we had, for those of us who have been around a couple meetings, those were some things that we did talk about. You know, that's very, very kind on the part of the community, but to be quite honest with you, our, our insurance company won't let us do that, and, you know, to have folks come in, whether or not they're, you know, if they're not employees, that does put us in, at a level of jeopardy that we do have to consider. Pros for, and, so I won't go into a lot of the cons for the outside, because a lot of those things are related, you know, I mean, obviously, if people think that things work well for the inside, then they thought they wouldn't work quite as well for the outside, and there were some concerns about that. There's also some concern that, that if there is heat, a lot of heat, incredibly sunny day, and temperature goes rising, that there might be some people who may fall prey to the heat, and, so we may have to have EMS handy onsite as well. I'm just telling you, folks, all right, so, so outside, outside, everybody obviously thought that it was very picturesque, that there was, that the airflow in some cases, depending upon the weather, can actually be, be a little bit better than the, in the gymnasium, that, that the gymnasium might not be quite as aesthetically pleasing, that, you know, and that, that it's, that it's a very scenic area. So, and those were the pieces that I got, and, you know, I just simply asked people to give me a list, and give it to me, and I would write those things down, and that's, and that's all there was to it. I mean, based upon, when you look at, and the other piece that, that I do need to mention, because it is, it is a concern in, in this day and age, and that, and that is that a control over a certain level of security is better if it's inside, than, perhaps than, or more effective than it would be, than it could be, I should say, if it's outside. Based upon those pieces, based upon those pieces, we recommend an inside event. Now, that just places it in your hands.
Excuse me, just a moment, just a moment, let the board discuss, what is the pleasure of the board? Do you have any questions or comments?
I guess for me, it's, I think we're getting conflicted, a little bit of, I'm struggling to put the right words to it. I think maybe some of the student body, and I mean no disrespect at all, because I think the student body has done a wonderful job, you guys have excelled in school, and Christian, like you said, there's a lot of things to be proud of, and I don't see it right now, but the young lady that stepped up front here, being able to grow that way, that's a huge achievement in life, but I think some of this is getting a little bit concluded on, if the ceremony's outside, your, your achievements don't go away. If they're inside, they don't go away, they're your achievements, where you graduate, really doesn't matter, that's the achievements that you take out and go on in life, that's, they're the key factors, I think, you should know, and I, I've been saying about this a lot, and one of the things that I come back to, because the comments made, we need to make decisions for the best of the school and student, and that's what we are here for, and that's what we try to do. I can remember when my kids were in grade school, and I've got one graduating and one graduate, my wife would drop the kids off in town to school and walk them to the classrooms, and I can remember being quite of upstair in the community, when the situation arose that we had to stop that, where I wasn't on board at that time, but decisions had to be made to change the protocol and the procedures at the town's school, where now, parents don't walk their children to those classrooms. Even though some of those decisions, I think, are tough to make, and are not favorable, but when you stop and you take the safety and everything else into consideration, and backing the recommendations, I can see the picturesque, the outside, I can see the benefit in that, I can also see that, just, you know, and I can see the recommendations or the support for tradition. Unfortunately, times change, things have to change with it, and for me personally, I, I think we're at the point that, for a lot of other reasons, it needs to come indoors.
Marilyn?
My feelings are similar to Kevin's, I feel that we shouldn't be indoors because of safety reasons. We don't know who's out in this community, we don't know who can decide they want to take a pop shot on the football field, and I, I don't want to be responsible for that. I would rather they were in here safe and sound.
Excuse me, hold on.
Not a graduation.
Hold it, excuse me, let's have respect, let's have respect, we, we listened. Butch, go to your.
Obviously, nobody listened.
Cory, we didn't interrupt you, we didn't interrupt you, just, please have respect.
Just because we disagree in opinion, that's where we're at.
Okay, what's your thoughts, Butch?
I'd go back to, to set up for both of them, like I said, there's a good possibility where Mother Nature's been going, there's a good possibility to be inside no matter what, the weather can say that, you know, it's gonna be good, it's gonna be this, and it's gonna be that, we've all been there, and then it gets closer to the time, and the weather changes, and they say, they say, you know, we have to come back inside, so, that's just my opinion.
All right.
Looking at the forecast, it doesn't look good, but listening to all these kids, understand, maybe we could see what it's doing at least Thursday, to see. I mean, if it's pouring Thursday, we're, we're pretty much gonna say no.
The only thing I can offer you, the only thought that I have, and I, I wasn't gonna go there, but I will, just by what we've witnessed here, when you make, if it's forecasted for weather on Saturday, and we make that call on Thursday, my money's on the fact it'll be pushed, why did you make the call at eight o'clock Thursday morning, why did you not make it till five? And why didn't you wait until Friday to make the call?
Well, with our documents in front of us, I believe, the company that brings the stage, they set that stage up, John, is that correct?
Yes, it'll be here at noon on Thursday.
So that stage has to be set up, and once it's set up, we can't touch it, it's the company that would dismantle it.
So, when the stage is set up, like, by two-thirty to three o'clock on Thursday afternoons, we're committed to wherever we set up, no matter what the weather is, and that's that.
And I have, just a moment, I, I'm taking into, this into consideration, and listening to the audience, as well as the previous board meeting, I've sat in both, kind of like Butch, we've, we've been in both situations, I personally, it is, it's beautiful out on the field, I'll agree with that, more so for the students than the parents, because the parents are seeing the students, and then just the backdrop of the houses, where we get to see the mountains, but, that aside, in my opinion, that's all there is, because it tends to be hot or excessively windy, where we're trying to hold on to things on the table, the sound, we can't hear, sitting out on the field, you know, we can't hear the valedictorian or salutatorian, or the guest speakers, that's very, excuse me, excuse me, please, as far as the video, we, I believe, Mr. Robinson, we are able to do that in both locations now?
Yes.
Okay, so, where before, that wasn't an issue. The seating, we had heard once before that the seating capacity, it looks like we can hold just as many inside as we can outside with the auditorium, granted, the auditorium would have the video. And one of the other things that, it's approximately seventy percent higher in cost for setting up both locations, versus setting up and committing to one location.
There's a difference.
So that does make it, you know, to take into consideration, and to the fact that at noon, when the graduation, if it were to be held inside, at noon, the custodial staff can lock the door and go and enjoy their families' graduations, where if it's held outside, they are there until three-thirty, four o'clock, cleaning up, so they're unable to, you know, go to them right away. So, my opinion would be to follow the recommendation of the administration, but if, do you want to take a vote on it, or?
Can I, can I, I know it's not public, but can I say something? I was involved in graduations for twenty-seven years, and we had some outside, we had some inside, we had one year where we started outside, got halfway through, and moved inside. The thing I'm not hearing, though, and with all due respect, you know, you talk to administrators, you talk to staff, but what is graduation about? It's not about staff, it's not about custodial, it's not about the administrators, graduation is about, and for the kids. When you were polling and asking for pros and cons, I noticed there was no mention of asking the kids what they thought about it, and quite honestly, it's their graduation. I know there, you know, there were issues outside with heat, with wind one time, but then, when you go inside, and no offense to Rick, but to ask part of the families to sit in the auditorium and watch it on a TV screen, to me, is kind of insulting to the families, to not give them the opportunity to see it live. Yeah, it's more expensive, but we know what the cost is gonna be every year, that should have been already taken into account. Yeah, it's a tough decision every year, do we have it in, do we have it out, do we set up for both, what are we gonna do, but in the end, really, isn't it up to the kids where they want to have it, provided the weather is working?
So, that brings me, that brings me a question here.
Sure.
Regarding the senior class, the students' senior class, has the senior class, as a class, come to the administration and asked for it to be outdoors, or has it been by this petition that's been driven from the outside?
They did not come to me, I'd have to look over to these folks and see if anyone had come to them.
That's like the students approach me, but not the senior.
So, has the senior?
Can I do not hear what was said?
I can't hear you either.
What was that?
Said I had selected students approach me, but not the senior.
And what was said to those students?
Well, the ones that I had talked to.
I think the seniors as a whole wanted, they didn't want to bombard them, they wanted...
Yeah, well, we had a whole group of forty-five students, we had a whole group of forty-five students getting ready, we were gonna go in at seven fifty AM in the morning, come to your office, but we were told that we shouldn't, because it wasn't gonna make it happen, and Mrs. Lucker told us that we were going to have the decision, or you guys were gonna make the decision three days earlier, so we thought, oh, okay, it's already settled, so that's why we didn't go in, because we were told that the decision was going to be made three days earlier, based on weather and nothing else.
Also, we were told that we have to follow protocol and go through the board, not just to bombard and go into the office.
Well, typically, you are correct, in the past, it has been decided on weather, since I've been on the board, Thursday before graduation, it was decided, what the weather looked like on Thursday, so that is correct. Mr. Hoyt, to your direction, yes, it is, you know, a senior class graduation, unfortunately, you know, we can't, you ask, well, what are the, what does the class want, well, the class all wanted to skip too, but we can't, you know, agree to that, so, that's one thing that we have to be very careful, is, you know, we take this into consideration, we listen to the students.
Well, you didn't say anything off the student comment, you like, like, Mr. Hoyt said, was nothing in there about students, you're worried about the janitors leaving early, these guys worked all year long, their butts off.
They have worked all year long, I agree with that, but we're not just taking into consideration just the students, we are taking into consideration our staff as well, because as we sit here, we represent everyone within the district, not just the students, you know, our students are our top priority, we try to make decisions on our students.
That is sad, it is.
We have not had...
Ten percent, ten percent right now has been for yesterday, eighty-nine degrees.
Do you remember, I understand that at one time, we used, we... Do you remember, I understand that at one time we used, we had a, um, it was a graduation setup. Then it started raining. What, what was that, did, was the gym already set up for that? Excuse me, excuse me.
Yes.
So the gym was already set up for that?
They were both set up, outside and in.
Okay. I just questioned about the, um, at one time we did have a graduation outside. It started raining, and everyone had to, you know, come to the gym. Just wondering what, what type of format was that, you know, was it downpour or something like that?
And we ran, and that made it memorable. I, I remember, I was there. Um, but, can I say? We don't, they don't need a stage outside. I mean, they don't, I mean, the inside stage, yes, maybe for visual sites, but outside, we, we didn't have.
Well, as it stands right now, it looks like wherever the stage is set up, that's where it has to stay. We cannot tear the stage down, the company, so where the decision is made.
As always was, as I recall, backup was inside, the stage was set up in there for visuals, so that when they go across, you saw them, but outside, we didn't have a stage.
So what is the pleasure of the board? It looks like it comes down to...
Say, at the minimum, probably rain till Thursday, to at least. I don't, I'm just, from the forecast, it looks like rain, but I don't blame them for wanting it outside. It's quite a showing of people, students, and I understand the staff's point, too, it's a tough, it's a tough call, but...
And even if we go set it up for both, come Thursday, it might still be inside.
That's fine, that's okay.
Listen, listen, we're talking, okay? We heard you guys.
All right. Kevin? Try to...
I don't know, I'm all over.
Well, unfortunately, um...
We don't have a lot of time, all over.
Right, yeah. If that's just in a difficult situation, we, we hear our staff, we understand the concerns. We hear the students, we hear the public. We can set this up into locations.
I'm not a big fan of redundant work. If you take and roll the dice at all, and you set this thing up on Thursday, it needs to go where it's gonna go. Like, if there's, if you, if we go down that road, there needs to be a percentage of rain that we chose that we're gonna roll the dice in, or we're gonna go indoors to. Because I don't think it is right. We're in the ninth hour, and we're trying to make decisions.
Well, I understand, um, looking at the forecast, um, it looks like ninety percent chance of rain, heavy rain on Thursday. John, um, excuse me, Mr. Jackson? Um, with that forecast, seventy percent chance, or ninety percent chance rain on Thursday, if we get a heavy rain like we received, you know, today, what are the chances of setting up on a Saturday for that field?
Setting the stage up?
Um, well, even if not the stage, but the chairs themselves, putting the chairs on a football field, you know, after a heavy rain, how, how many days? Mr. Hoover, you might be the better one for this.
You would need, you know, your chairs are gonna sink into the field. I mean, I've seen it happen, I've seen, you know, I've, this would be my twenty-fourth graduation, I've seen it many, many times, and it's just, you know what it is, well, it's wild.
And that's when, you know, right.
So we, for argument's sake, we set up, we plan on setting up for an outside graduation. Right? And it rains Thursday?
Right.
But it's sunny Friday? And it's sunny Saturday? Do you think the field dries out in that time?
Yes, if we had sun and some wind, the field could dry out enough. But we have to, we have to set the stage up on Thursday afternoon, because I believe we have graduation practice on Friday morning.
Friday morning.
So basically, we're looking at the longest that we can really delay a decision on this.
It'd be Thursday.
It'd be Thursday morning, first thing.
Thursday afternoon.
And if there's any weather Thursday, you're stuck on not setting up?
Right.
Outdoors.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go by... Go by that, we'll plan on the weather on Thursday?
Well, I'm concerned also about when you're outside, those kids are gonna be walking down that slope and with the nasty weather we've had. That's, it's gonna be a...
Excuse me, excuse me. So we'll give it Thursday at noon?
That's...
And we'll... You know, we'll make a decision?
If that's agreeable with the rest of the board. And the administration, they're the ones that got put to...
Okay.
So, I just, not trying to pass the buck, but trying to... Right, and that's, that never works.
Right. Okay, so as of right now, we will, um...
Get out of this chatter.
We'll plan on setting up that, sorry, go ahead.
Is it a possibility, because we are looking at the weather forecast? I mean, Saturday looks gorgeous with ten percent chance. There is chance of showers at Thursday and Friday. If the weather forecast on Thursday still looks good for Saturday like it is, can we still possibly have the option of it outside, just without, and have the stage set up inside for the backup, and then?
Well, like, like Mr. Jackson's saying, eve, if we, if we get rain Thursday and Friday, there's no way that the field would be ready to set the chairs on. It just makes it a very unsafe environment for the, the kids sitting on, on the chairs. They sink in, they're not sturdy. Um, and that's the first priority that we need to make sure, so we will leave it as, um, as in the past, we will make that determination on Thursday. You're in agreement?
Yes.
Is that okay, Mr. Jackson? Thursday? Okay. All right. Let's move on, we have, um, no correspondence, are we all right? We have, I don't think I have. We have, um, a presentation of our students for hobby, are they here this evening? I don't see them.
You aren't gonna please, no matter how you do it.
No, it just makes me right.
It does.
Anthony Seda?
It does, it makes me right.
Is he here?
I don't know if Anthony's here.
No?
But if he's not, we can postpone his presentation till a later day.
Another one? Okay, so we will postpone?
Honestly, I thought the seniors were well behaved.
Um...
It wasn't the seniors of my interest.
Do we have any additions to the agenda?
Yes, we do. We have two non-consent items that we're adding to the agenda. One is a bus lease bid award. The district received one bid from Leonard Bus Sales, and the school business manager is recommending that we accept that one. And we have a resignation from Mr. Hoover as Director of Special Education as of June thirtieth, contingent upon his appointment as middle school principal. So those would be non-consent items. And in addition, earlier in your packet, we had to adopt the multi-tiered system of support plan. We have pulled back items, and we'll bring that back in August.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the bus lease bid award, number eight A? Now, do we have a motion to accept that? Second?
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Next, we have the resignation of Adam Hoover as the Director of Special Education as of June thirty, two thousand nineteen, contingent upon his appointment as middle school principal. Do we have a motion to accept that?
I'll make it.
Second?
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. All right, um, we are up to consent agenda. We have the financial reports. We have the certified class of two thousand nineteen. The disposal of records. The acceptance of the MOU retiree employment, Donna Beers. Approved seventy-five hours, or summer hours. And this is for the, um, for Pam DeDazio, the LPN, for the nineteen-twenty school year. Um, approval of the nineteen-twenty summer stipends. And, um, personnel, the unpaid leave of absence. We have personal appointments, summer part-time custodial help, summer part-time custodial help, um, uh, for Carl McGibben. Summer school instructors, the summer school nurse, summer school librarian aide, summer school librarian, uh, two summer school librarian aides. We have the summer school reading and the grade chair department. And then we also have, um, personnel approvals. We have mentor assignments for two thousand nineteen and twenty. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. All right, new business. Um, we have...
Sorry to...
Sorry?
Um, I just have a question about the field and the future of graduation. Would it be a possibility with the tarp, the field, ahead of time?
No, I'm sorry. No, no.
Tarp the field like Wednesday night?
No. I don't have that.
Not at all?
No, I don't even think we own a tarp, do we?
I have several.
No, we can't do that, no, sorry.
When it, it would just, it would kill everything.
Right, right.
Big brown spot, size of your tarp, you'd have to...
That's a day or so. I mean, if it rained, if we tarped it on Wednesday evening, and it rained Thursday, and you took it off Thursday evening?
Yeah.
No, we couldn't do that, sorry.
It would bake.
Thank you.
All right, um, sorry for that. Okay, we have new business, um, accept donations. We have one copy of On the Farm at the Market for the Walton Chapter FFA to the Townsend School Library. We have one thousand six hundred and seventy dollars from the PTSA to the class of two thousand twenty. Twenty dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Anthony Contello to the class of two thousand twenty. Twenty dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Randy Avansky, senior, to the class of two thousand twenty. Thirty-five dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Harold Neal, Jr., in memory of Helen Edwards. A thousand dollars from Margaret Adam to Larry Says Scholarship for the high school seniors. And a hundred dollars from Jeff Held to the Walton Class of nineteen-seventy-nine Scholarship. Do we have a motion to accept the donations? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. All right, um, ten B, we have, um, a recommendation to approve the change of the science courses. If I understand this right, seventh grade will be taught physical, or, um, yeah, physical science, and eighth grade will be taught life science. Do we have a motion to accept that change?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. And ten C, um, accept the school physician proposal. This is with, uh, UHS Delaware Valley Hospital and the Walton Central School District in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the year of July one, two thousand nineteen, through June thirty, two thousand twenty-one.
Ten thousand per year?
Ten thousand per year, sorry. Do we have a motion to accept that?
I'll make it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Okay, um, approve the transfer of the elementary box tops. Apparently, the box tops got, um, merged into a general fund account, um, an unassigned fund balance, so they have since then set up an account to separate that out for better tracking for the auditors. Do we have a motion to accept that transfer?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. And then we have the, uh, Ward of the Transportation Contract Bid, and this is with Rolling the Bus Corporation and Walton Central School. Do we have a motion to accept that?
Make it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. All right, and this is, uh, the reconstructive administrative position. Pull this up. The middle school principal, director of health and physical education and athletics position being hereby is reconstructed with a tenure area of administration effective July one, two thousand nineteen. This will be for a middle school principal, director of health, physical education, and athletics. Do we have a motion to accept that? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. All right, and then we, um, have emergency appointment of a long-term, sub, long-term substitute teacher, Elizabeth Ogden. Do we have a motion to accept that?
I'll make it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. All right, and ten H. These are the appointments, uh, middle school principal, effective January one, two thousand nineteen, Adam Hoover. Elementary school principal, Amanda Hoover. And special education teacher, Jean Marie Conley. Do, any questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. All right, we are up to, um, reading of policies. This would be the first reading, um, and these as well will be an anticipation date of January one, two thousand twenty. Kevin, would you like to do the honors?
Sure. Policy five thousand, student policy goals. Five thousand twenty point three, rights of students with disabilities under section five oh four. Policy five thousand thirty, student complaints. Policy five thousand one hundred, student attendance. Five thousand one hundred dash E, student attendance dash compulsory, attendance ages exhibit. Policy five thousand one thirty, compulsory attendance agents, am I saying that right?
Compulsory, yeah.
Policy five thousand one forty, entrance age. Policy five thousand one fifty, school admissions. Policy fifty-one fifty-one, homeless children. Policy fifty-one fifty-two, admissions of non-resident students. Policy fifty-one fifty-two dash, or, um, excuse me, dot one, admissions of foreign students. Policy fifty-one sixty-two, student dismissal precautions. Policy fifty-two hundred, curricular and extracurricular programs. Policy fifty-two oh five, eligibility for curricular, extracurricular activities. Policy fifty-two ten, student organizations. Policy fifty-two twenty-five, student personal expressions. Policy fifty-two fifty-two, student activities fund management. Policy fifty-two eighty, interscholastic athletics. Policy fifty-three hundred, code of conduct. Policy fifty-three thirty, searches and interrogations. Policy fifty-four oh five, student wellness. Policy fifty-four twenty, student health services. Policy fifty-four fifty dot one, notification of sex offenders. Policy fifty-four sixty, child abuse, maltreatment, or neglect in a domestic setting. Policy fifty-five hundred, student records. Policy fifty-five hundred dash E dot one, student records exhibit, uh, dot per, per, notifications. Policy fifty-five hundred dash E dot two, student records exhibit directory information... Policy 5,500 dash E dot 2 Student Records Exhibit Directory Information. Policy 5,500 dot E, excuse me, dash E dot 3 Students Records Exhibit Release of Directory Information. Policy 5,500 dash E dot 4 Student Records Exhibit Parents Bill of Rights. Policy 5,550 Student Privacy. Policy 5,550 dash E Student Privacy Exhibit. Policy 5,800 Student Contest and Awards.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Do we have a motion to accept them as the first reading?
I'll make it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. All right. And then we have emergency second reading. This was one that we had to put in place by June 30, correct? This was the Uniform Grant Guidance for Federal Awards and Uniform Grant Guidance Internal Controls. Do we have a motion to accept that as our second reading?
I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. All right. We are up to last hurrah for Mr. Neal, who has... Some of you may not know, but this is the last meeting for Butch Neal on the Board of Education, who has served 28 years. So against his consent, we have decided to celebrate Mr. Neal tonight. And we start, and let me start. Here you go. We have first, the Walton Central School District Recognition Award for 28 Years of Service awarded to Harold A. Neal Jr. for outstanding commitment to the students of the Walton Central School District as a Board of Education member and making a positive impact on our community. So, thank you. And we have a few more recognitions for you. We also have a service collaboration education pledge. This is from the Shenango County School Boards Association. Acknowledges and thanks Mr. Harold Neal Jr. for 25 years of service as a Board of Education member. And you are awarded two pins, one a 20 and a 5 on them. Don't get comfortable. We have a few more.
All right. So, you know, this is a great honor for me because I know Butch less than anybody here in this room. But I do have to say that in the few months that I've worked with him, I've had a lot of appreciation for his quiet side and when he needs to speak, that it's pretty darn meaningful. And how when he does speak, I think everybody decides they're going to listen very quickly. So, Butch, it's been a pleasure for me. And this is a school board recognition certificate for you for 28 years of dedicated service, as Rhonda says, and it's been a real pleasure for me. Thank you so much.
We have a card for you, from your friends. And because anyone that has sat on the board with Butch knows his love of coffee. We have a basket here from all of us to you. And we also have a $100 donation has been made in your honor towards the Walton Booster Club Wrestling Camp program.
Thank you.
And I don't believe... Brian, would you like to come?
Well, good evening all, and thanks for having me. It's a great pleasure to be back here at WCS because this is my home. I graduated '25. And I think Butch has probably known me since I was knee-high to grasshoppers, so it gives me great pleasure on behalf of the New York State School Board Association to acknowledge Butch for 28 years of service to public education and the WCS Board of Education. So, Butch.
And I do believe that we have a few people that have a few words for you. Anybody want to start? And you're it.
I have a little thing I would like to read. And the title of it is, "So What Would His Name Be?", question mark. So here we go. He is hardworking, thoughtful of others, and wanting others to have fulfilling lives. What would his name be? He believes that we are all alike or similar. He says we put our clothes on the same way. He believes we all should try our best. If we win, do it gracefully. If you lose, do it honorably. And be who you are. Everyone, he says, should choose his own path, and we should be supportive of each other. So who is this man who has devoted all 28 years as a board member to this distinguished public school, WCS? You are right. He is Butch Neal, a wise, caring man, and aren't we all better for knowing? One more time.
I just had... You know how I am. I'm the one that has the sweatshirt that says, "Help, I'm talking and I can't shut up." I've been thinking a lot about you this week, Butch, and it occurred to me that you have served this board, this community through six superintendencies. I did count Dr. Matt twice.
Twice.
Through countless iterations of board members. And you serve. You are one of those people who understands what it means to be a board member, to be supportive of your fellow board members. You are one who always understood that no matter what, the kids came first, no matter what. And you are a person who defines integrity in that the cliche definition, I suppose, is that you always do the right thing when no one is looking, even when no one is looking. I think this district has been immeasurably blessed to have you serve through some very difficult times. And you always were steady. You were always the rock that people looked to. And the people who have served with you feel so fortunate to count you as a friend. So, thank you.
So, what? Isn't that the best?
I have tons of memories where Butch is involved. I guess I've known Butch since the mid-'60s. I didn't want to date us. You know, he started Walton Booster Club Wrestling Program in 1971. That was basically unheard of at that time to have a Booster Club Wrestling Program. I guess didn't really call it that. It's called the small fry wrestling, correct, Butch? And he just stayed with it, and stayed with it, and stayed with it all the way up through until about 1990, when some other, some younger generation came in to take over. Wrestling is a young man's sport, by the way. But he's always supported us. Every single duel meet at Townsend School or here at the high school, he's there to run the clock to keep the score. Even when I was a kid in high school, he was there to keep the score while he ran the clock at Townsend School. He's always been a... You know, the kids that came through the program, he's always been a great supporter of theirs. Basically, the number one supporter of wrestling around. He went through... I'm like the fifth coach now that he's been through in wrestling through the... 50-some years? Yeah, 50-some years. We have a really kind of a high-end game program in Walton, and we've always... It's been a tradition, a lot like football is the Walton. And a lot of people think wrestling is a dying sport around, but it certainly isn't the Walton. And Butch is one of the reasons that it's that way. It's just, it's just the way it is. You get kids and families that are so involved in it. And, you know, a lot of it's Butch getting those kids involved.
Anyone else?
I think if I can just add, I think Judy Neal deserves a prize. Because really, for you to have served all this time, Judy Neal picked up a whole lot of slack, and she deserves... And she deserves our thanks as well.
Received a letter from Bonnie Noah.
Oh, nice.
Not even though, but that's back from the beginning, but 1991? So this is a letter from Bonnie. Greetings, Butch. Congratulations on your 28 years of service at Walton Public School. And sure, the students and community appreciate your dedicated service. I had the opportunity of serving with you for five years. I respected your opinions and insights on matters brought before you. Thank you for making difficult decisions and caring about educating the kids in Walton for so many years. Now enjoy your Tuesday nights and leave that hell to others. Sincerely, Bonnie Noah.
I also have a card for Butch from everyone at the bus garage. We thank you for your dedication and your support through the years. You were there when I started 26 years ago at Moore Channel, and I hope you had a hand in approving me. So, I thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, boys.
We are going to take intermission, a break, and enjoy some cupcakes over here. And then that way Butch can talk amongst everyone. Okay, we are, that was very nice.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, Butch.
Your grandsons were very excited.
After that, Charles, they're probably better yet in the winter.
Yeah.
They'll go to their house.
We'll see them tomorrow. All right, we are up to superintendent remarks.
So we have quite a crowd here to give our last report. I'm going to ask everybody to be fairly brief, being how we've got a late night here, but we're going to start with Justin, because I know he's got just a few minutes to save you.
I'm going to try to give you 10 months of athletics in two minutes. Already, Rick has it on the screen for me, so just to give you some highlights of our year. Our participation numbers for JV and varsity and modified teams are certainly there at the top, which are pretty solid numbers for all, so I'm very pleased with that. Some of our team accomplishments, 13 of our 14 varsity teams were named scholar athlete teams, which means 75% of the roster had GPAs over 90, which is pretty remarkable. Nine of our 12 teams qualified for sectional or postseason play. Our girls varsity softball team won the sportsmanship award this spring. Some individual accomplishments, Chandler Merwin, section four New York State championship winner in wrestling. Olivia Harvey became the fifth player in Walton history to reach 1,000 points in her basketball career. Tommy McGuire, boys soccer set a new career scoring record. Cody Merwin won a section four champion in wrestling. Caleb Robinson won a section four championship, also set school records for most wins in a season and most career pins. Am I missing anything, John? I think you'd correct me if I wasn't.
Five, I mean, no championships, that's tied for the most ever.
Right. Morgan Condon just recently went to Middletown for the New York State track and field championships in the 400 meter and set a new school record this year with his time in the 400 meter. We had multiple league champions in track, Isaac Vesterfeldt, Morgan Condon. Our relay teams in the four by, one in four by four, one, as well as, I should have put sectional championships down the bar, because we had sectional champions for Isaac Vesterfeldt, Lucas Wallley, Jose Maribel, Morgan Condon, Zach Coliello, and our relay team as well with section four champions in track. Individual accomplishments for coaches, Kelly Gates had her 100th win this year in girls soccer in the fall. Gary Dacus and myself were both named Coach of the Year for our league and our respective sports. Other notable things, Rick Robinson, kudos to you, he helped to get live streaming of our games on our YouTube channel. So as I was at my daughter's Christmas concert in December, I was sitting there and watching Walton basketball from a different school, which is pretty neat. Not to my wife, but. This year, we have the numbers to add JV softball back, and again, that's a year-to-year type of decision. We had our athletic awards by June 3rd. We honored four people for service awards, Andy and Kelly Gates, Tom Connington and Ron Golly, all received service awards for their many years in support of our athletics. We are very lucky to have the quality coaches that we have here and the experienced coaches that we have here. There are so many schools around us that are just struggling finding coaches, and they're just, you know, they end up with people who are not certified, and, you know, we're very, very fortunate. We have a lot of athletes who work super hard and are very committed, and the sportsmanship for our teams is never questioned, and that's one thing I'm proud of, is that they don't question our sportsmanship at Walton. Also, my eyes were really open to the number of different people involved with making this run this year, and obviously custodial staff, building and grounds to get basketball ready, to get fields ready outdoors, even in bad weather, things like that. Tracy in transportation, I'm constantly making changes, and he's always willing to help out, and we have a lot of coaches who volunteer unpaid just to be part of it. I appreciate them. The Booster Club programs are so important to the success of what happens at the JV and varsity levels, administration, Board of Education, business office. And August 5th, we go at it again. August 5th is Meet the Coaches Night for the Fall. So it will be short, we'll go at it, and then we start August 19th for first day of fall sports, so. That's 10 months and two, two and a half minutes, so thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Two and a half minutes.
Do you have a time on the August 5th?
Six o'clock. Auditorium, six o'clock.
If I show them, just send me home.
Okay.
Jim Hoover laughed already, but he loves it, like, the next two years, football will start till the Monday after the fair is over with, and I think Adam loves it, too.
Let's go to Tim.
Well, I guess the first thing I'm going to do is, since this would be my last official meeting here as well, I'll just say thank you to you guys for the opportunity. I think.
Tim, can I have another piece of cake?
No, I think that, you know, I am appreciative of, you know, everything that I have received, and, you know, you guys were really good to me when I came and were very helpful. I can't tell you the number of people that, you know, saw me in the grocery store and indicated that they were happy that I was, you know, part of the thing. So I appreciate that. I think that that is a, you know, it says a lot about, you know, the character of the individuals in the district, you know, community and otherwise, so I do appreciate that. I am going to take a second here, though, and I, because I didn't get a chance to express myself with regards to the admin meeting, because I wasn't there. This isn't the For What It's Worth column, I'm not a big fan of, you know, standing up in front of, well, not stand in front of people, but I do that, but not in front of, with the crowd. But I do see that what's really important in our, you know, in the district is to serve the people that are here, community, school, and otherwise. And this seems to be, the outside graduation seems to be something that's really important to that crowd. And I think what would be really nice that we could, you know, at least express that we're going to do everything we possibly can. I think that the concerns about some of the safety and those types of things, while they are always everything that we think about, they are also relatively small in terms of, you know, concerns of things that are happening. We have stuff that goes on here all the time. I bet the field days was more of a risk for, you know, our population than, you know, walking out of wet field, okay? So, again, my opinion, but I would be, you know, remiss for myself if I didn't express that to you guys, as I think I have tried to express myself every time we've gotten together. Again, I thank you for letting me indulge and share that with you. Thank you.
And Tim, thank you very much for what you did. I know it wasn't an easy task when you came on, but we appreciate the hard work that you put into it. We wish you the best. I think you have left us in very good hands, and you've got things in order, and thank you.
Well, transportation-wise, we finished up sports, as I said. We're finishing up right now Townsend School field trips. We have one on Thursday, we have another one on Monday, so we're going right to the last day with those. Starting to gear up toward our summer work at the Bus Garage. We have currently two international bus mechanic trainings scheduled during the summer, bus driver physicals during the summer. I have my NIAF conference in July, my SED refresher course in August, driver pick meeting in August, and then we're right back at it in September. So, you know, a lot of people say, well, what do you do all summer? Summer is the tough part, you know, getting ready for school in September with the routes and everything that we have to do along with the other stuff. And I really, really want to say thank you to the board for policy 5,000-1.5, which is all new administrators have to get their bus license. I really appreciate that.
Anybody listening, it's not true.
And so, since I have extra time, I'm going to defer my extra time to Rick, because he got missed last meeting, so he's going to have double time to talk.
Thank you.
What's up, Rick? You want to say something?
I don't really have much. We did a K-9 search with the senior class, which went very extremely well the other day. Thank you to Major DeMayo for showing up at 6:30, 6:45 that morning. John and I are working on replacement radios so that we're on the VHF channel with the Bus Garage. That way we can have seamless communication between Townsend, the high school, and the Bus Garage. That's in theory. We're hoping it comes through. Right now, we're currently, the high school and Townsend are on UHF channels and the Bus Garage VHF. So if we cause issues during lockdowns or other emergencies, we all need to be able to communicate together on one radio. So that's of extreme importance. We are adding fiber to the Bus Garage July 1st or shortly thereafter, which is a big step for us. Bus Garage has never been on our internal network. They are, they are on our internal network, but it's really kind of a cop job, to be quite honest with you. So this is going to be a legitimate way to get them their phones, get them camera, install a camera system and other important safety aspects over there. And last but not least, we are doing a Wi-Fi upgrade sometime in mid-July, a complete Wi-Fi upgrade. We're ripping out the entire old system, installing an all-new one. Hopefully, that'll prepare us for a one-to-one environment shortly thereafter, and that's it. I'm out.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. You know, the way I started the school year and the way I ended is not really, I didn't really picture myself hanging up here at the beginning of the year, but, you know, I just want to say thank you to everyone here for giving me the opportunity to help out on the administrative team this year. It's been a huge learning experience, one that I'm very thankful for, as it kind of coincides with my schoolwork. Finishing on my practice here in the summer, my second practice, my final class, which I'm looking forward to very much. So I'll be here throughout the summer, and I just want to say thanks again.
Thank you.
Mark?
Well, today was the beginning of regents, not league anymore, but the regents, the junior regents. We got through one day, we had a few more to go through, we're getting there. Last night, I attended the VOTAC awards assembly, I wouldn't say assembly, presentations that they have annually. Incredibly well-attended, I mean, there was standing room only at the end, I mean, the place was packed. My kids did very well, you know, several received scholarships and extra recognition. The Madonna girl in particular, was profiled as being the selectee for the annual valedorian dinner, and she was the selectee from the CMO, the celebrity there. And her teacher in the Certified Nurse Assistant Program was the honorary as well. They had a little say it for them, it was quite nice. But all of our students did pretty well and came to the prizes. It was a nice event. We're gearing up toward the end of the year, and all that is entailed for that, so getting ready.
Yes.
And I'm looking forward to the 20s.
I just also want to thank all of you for your support during this year. It's been a busy year, and I think that we, I'm still looking forward to this year. We've got a great team together now. I've put together quite a very full schedule for a repeat for an administrative retreat, and so we can come together and we can really kind of hammer out consistent policies right across the three schools, in curriculum, right across the instruction, across kind of every aspect of leadership in the district. And I'm very, very confident that we're all on the same page, and I'm very, very grateful to all of you, particularly the curriculum team members, for your support with kind of creating a vision that we want our children to be really, really successful. So we're at the beginning of that journey, that starts in September.
Thank you.
Really looking forward to that year.
So our seventh and eighth graders are done. Our seventh grader's went on a trip yesterday to the Utica Zoo, which was very successful. The kids had a lot of fun, and one of our seventh grade teachers' husbands was a zookeeper there, so they kind of got a little bit of behind-the-scenes type, type of looking things, and they enjoyed that. Our sixth graders continue on until next week, and we're gearing up for the summer. Mr. Lewis and I have a lengthy list of things that we've been adding to throughout the year, of things that need to make sure we address in one way over the summer, and I'm looking forward to it.
We're getting ready, we're geared up for a very, very busy summer. We have 40 workdays throughout the summer to get ready up until September 3rd. We have things planned almost to the minute, not really, but to the day, and I think we're going to be able to do it okay. It is one of the shorter summers that we're going to have, and we're just gearing up, of course, for graduation, too, no matter where that may be, we'll get it done one way or the other. And just thank God, everybody, for the support they give me and our department, and especially Butch, I just want to say something more about him. He's always been, ever since I've been here, a huge supporter of our department, especially. Always, he's came in whenever you're asking with his equipment and stuff like that to help us out, of course, no cost to the district. And I do remember, and I forgot to add, that on February 14th, 2016, when it was 31 below zero at night and the power went off and we were froze up here, I believe it was like 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning, Butch walks through the front door on Sunday, February 14th, says, John, what do you need? I'm here to help.
Thank you, yes.
So I'll probably take just a little bit longer than they did, so I'll be a terrible example for them. Mike is ill, was ill the other day and didn't feel like he could attend meetings, so we excuse him for being here tonight. June 24th will be the last day of student attendance, pre-K through 6. We had an extra day in our calendar that we were aware of, and so we are going to have a conference day for the elementary primarily, but Tracy's got some things he's got planned for the bus drivers as well, so we've got some training going on on Tuesday, and we did send out a global call, and we sent out some flyers and things of that sort, so we've done our best to let the folks know, and I believe PJ put it on the website, too, so we let everybody know about that. I've been currently working a lot on the non-union group contracts for next year, probably have a lot of information for you for the July 2nd meeting with respect to that. WTA negotiations, we feel that we've come to an agreement, and we're looking for a ratification vote. I don't think they've said it yet, everything has been pretty fast and furious, as you can imagine this time of year. So we're looking forward to that, and hopefully we'll be able to give you some positive information with respect to that. Last week, I think it was, Justin and I went over to Tony Anta to talk with a combination of, it was a joint meeting of three athletic leagues, the MAC, the Delaware, and the Tri Valley. The gist of the meeting was to simply talk about where are we going forward with, everybody in the area, you know, in terms of declining enrollment, sports programs and things of that sort. That was the focus of it. Nobody really came up with, I think, a groundbreaking idea that we were going to take to the bank, but it was good to meet everybody, to share our concerns, and we'll probably meet again sometime next year to continue the conversation. Justin's been great, had ten in all of the meetings, and really doing yeoman's work as an AD this year. I'll get to some of that in a second, because I do want to make a comment about the crowd here. Jane is pretty much set with professional development in the summer, she mentioned all that. It's going to be, it's going to, you know, one of the amazing things is that, as you've kind of heard little bits of along here, is it's an amazing machine, and everybody's got either responsibility in a certain area, but, and at the same time, you have to work with each other. You have to get out of each other's way, and at the same time, you have to try to make sure certain things get accomplished. And these folks and their respective staff, my experience has been, they just make it happen. It's really phenomenal, if you think about the logistics of what goes on during the summer, let alone what goes on during the regular school year, and how these folks can make all these things happen. We're still looking at finishing some hiring. We've got a couple, as we talked about last time, we've got a couple positions that we knew we were going to have to take a look at, and we're not quite finished with that yet, but we're getting closer. I mean, I've been talking to folks that have been recommended to me and that sort of thing. So we're very positive in our outlook with respect to that. Last week, we met as a facilities committee, and we talked about, and met with our architectural engineer, Scott Dool, and we talked about primarily thoughts on flood mitigation project, but talked about some other small possibilities as well. We think we might have some good news to put forward, bring to this table in the future. Kevin and Butch and Grayden are, serve as part of the subcommittee, and Meg was there, and I was there, as I say, and we had a good meeting. We're bringing things together, we're coalescing, and I think it'll be, it'll be exciting to see when we get it all there. But I just want to report to you that we did meet last week, and we're moving forward. Yesterday, we did a little honorary day for Mr. Douglas Bartlett, who was a staff member here for years, and there was a barn that was dedicated to him, or a shed that's dedicated to him that the students made, and they put a little plaque up on the shed dedicated to him in the years that he served here, and that was, that was a great event, and he was really quite touched by that. And it was, it was, it was nice to talk to him about the Walton that he remembers, and some of the folks and some of the kids that he remembers, and even gave us a couple stories that were pretty interesting. So it was, it was a fun time. It was a real fun time, and I wish we could have, I wish we could have more of those times, actually. But I just want to go back for a minute and say how much I do appreciate this administrative team. We don't always agree on things, but we agree more times than we don't. It's a joy sitting at the table with them. You know, if I ask Rick to do something, or if I ask, if I have a question about something that's related to tech, he is on top of it faster than fast, and it's obvious that it's not because I'm asking him to do it, it's obvious because he loves that work, and this is his baby, and he wants to make sure that his baby grows up to be strong and healthy and helpful. And that's why he does what he does, and you're very lucky to have him. Justin, I came to him at the very beginning of the year, not really knowing him. We had a few conversations about a couple things early on in the year that I won't go into, but we went through and had some great moments. I asked him to take over the AD piece, and, you know, I've never had an issue all year long that he's had to come to me with. He's taken care of all of those pieces, and I'm very cognizant of the fact that it doesn't stop just because we're here at the end of the year. He's still going to be at it during the summer, and as he said, things start up in earnest on August 5th, and, you know, it's, in some ways, being an AD is a full-time job, and he's risen to the occasion marvelously, and I'm so happy that he's in the position. Tim, I remember from about maybe 12 or 14 years back, actually, I don't know how green he was at that time, but he was still at Walton. he was at that time, but he was still at Walton, and, you know, we met a couple times, so when I walked in here and I saw him, it was like, "Oh, okay, yeah, I know this guy, he's been around," and he's done okay, and I got to, I have to tell you that in many ways, if I need to speak philosophically or speak about the big, the ideal picture of how things ought to be done, or if I need a conscience, he's the person who does that for me and does that with me. He's not here every day of the week, but I have to say that the conversations that we've shared, I have cherished, and in some ways, I feel like we've grown up together, even though we've been in separate places, and I so appreciate the time that I've had with him. He also helped me find, by the way, a really good successor to him, and she's going to be magnificent, and I know that it's not going to make him feel bad if I say to him, "We're not going to miss you."
Not at all.
Personally, I will miss him, but as an organization, we're in good shape, and he's also, not only did he help us get to where we are, but he's also leaving us in great hands, and I just want to thank him for that. Tracy has probably taught me more in a year about transportation than I've known in 30 years, and because he's not afraid to give me a call, he's not afraid to say, "Hey, did you think about this?" Or, "I heard that this was going on, and I'd just like to share this with you," and I'm like, "Okay, why? Tell me about what's going on." And he's so easy to talk to and so easy to give you his perspective, and it's a perspective that's not about him, it's a perspective that's about that organization over there. He's always talking about the well-being of his drivers, he's always talking about the well-being of the kids in terms of their transportation needs, and that has been an incredible joy for me and a learning experience, and I do appreciate that very, 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 very much. Art came in, you know, kind of like Justin, kind of like Adam, that, you know, we had some needs, and we looked inside the stands for people who could hopefully rise to the occasion and help us out for a period of time. And I got to tell you, all three of these guys have returned to the district with interest, you know, and if you talk about, you know, return on investment, all three of them have been amazing. Art is a great learner, he's a great listener, and he's very adaptive, and he, his work, he settled into the administrative team early on, and he, you know, we get to a point where we're asking him some questions, and he's not afraid to answer, and you saw some of that presentation up here tonight and what some of that was about, and it's been a joy to work with him. We have little mentoring sessions once a week, four of us, Art and Adam and Jane and I, and we sit and we have some conversations. I think most of the time they're meaningful, but you'll have to ask them to be sure, but the fact that you can pull somebody from the inner ranks and really count on them and that, and they, as I said, return on investment is just amazing, and I'm so thankful for that. I can't say enough good things about Mark. I have characterized him sometimes as being, as being maybe a little deadpan, a little, maybe even, maybe coming off a little curmudgeonly, but you know what? I got to say a couple things, and one of them is that he probably has exceeded expectations as far as an interim high school principal in terms of his accessibility, in terms of his fairness, in terms of his evenness, in terms of, in terms of just, you know, being there in the kind of leadership role that we needed for a building. And, you know, I knew of Mark, he was the superintendent, which also put him in a position that he and I could have a conversation sometime and actually know where we're both coming from, because we've both been in places before, so it's nice to have that kind of conscience as well. And I think, again, I think that he's done an amazing job for somebody who came in and didn't know how, you know, knew that they weren't going to be permanent, but he's acted like he's permanent every day. And I do believe that the kids here have benefited from the short time that he's been here, and I know he's going to be very happy where he's going, and I have to say, I'm going to miss, Jane, I kind of stayed away from Jane at the beginning of the year because I figured she knew where she was going, and, and so, but as I have said to you a little later on in the year, I decided to get a little bit more involved with some things, and what I found out was Jane knows where she's going. She has, she has truly a great deal of intelligence with respect to curriculum, and I find her perspective on curriculum and instruction very, very on-target, very useful, and very helpful. And since I have gotten more involved with and understood her, what she does and what her vision is, I have huge respect for where she would like to see our program go, and I, for one, am very excited to see that with a complete staff as she's ever appeared for the coming year. She's, she, it's, she has an awful lot to offer, and plus, she's been part of our mentoring teams and contributed for that, for that, and her relationship with the staff on, in this campus, I know is very, very good, and as I say, I'm very excited about going to the, to the retreat that she has helped me set up and everything, with the entire staff really make, hopefully make some even greater things happen. Adam, a lot like Art, you know, remember Tim McMullin we had at the beginning of the year? Tim was, you know, wonderful guy, lots of experience, fun to talk to and listen to, had a great sense of humor and was a lot of fun, and then decided that he had to cut his time short with us. And so, went to Adam, said, "Hey, you know, can you do this and can you do the CSE at the same time with a little help?" And he said, "Yeah, I can do it." And, you know, it's, it's nice to hear somebody say that, but it's even better when you've got somebody who does do it. And he has done it, he has a great relationship with his middle school staff, he seems to have a good relationship with his middle school students, and I always say "seems" because I don't see him working it every day, but I'm not hearing things either, and sometimes, you know, that's, in and of itself can be, can be an indicator. I will say, I will say that Adam, along with everybody else here, if they've got a question about anything, they're not afraid to ask each other, they're not afraid to, I don't think they're afraid to come into my office, I see them often enough if they've got issues that, you know, we have conversation, and I think that our, I think that our ability to get along with each other and kid with each other to some extent, and to have fun in the job, I think is a real, is a real plus. I think it's been, I think it's been, I feel like it's been that way this year. And Adam's a big part of that, you know, he'll oftentimes tell us a story that'll get us going, get us gig going a little bit, but he's also very serious when we need him to be serious, and he can, he can make, he can make things happen like yesterday if I need it, if I need it to happen, and that's, and that's a joy. And John is, he's sort of the history guy here in many ways, he'll tell us what's going on, and he'll tell us what, how things used to be, but he doesn't say it in the way that "This is the way it was always done, and so this is the way it's got to be done forward." That's not it. But he gives us the history so that we have a perspective to work from, and then he's open to just about anything that anybody wants to try to do. You heard some of that tonight, I mean, you know, there's some concerns about, in different ways, from different people with respect to the commencement exercises, but, you know, "Hey, we'll do it, we'll get it done, and we'll do what we need to do." And that's okay, and he's okay with that, and that's the way that I've worked with him all year long too. I have worked in school districts before where it's hard to get a hold of your supervisor of operations and maintenance. John's not that guy. He is out doing things, and he does do his homework, and he does read up on some things, and he does do the testing that needs to be done, and when he's got a moment, he'll see me, but he'll make the moment to see me if I need to see him, and, you know, and I appreciate that. All these people at all these levels, it's been a joy for me this year, and I just wanted to share with you how much I care about every one of them, but probably one of the, honestly, person per person are probably the best staffs I've ever worked with, and I mean that. So, thank you for that privilege, and thank you for doing a great job this year.
Thank you.
And I do have a request for executive status to talk about, Corey.
Employment of a particular person?
Employment of a particular person, negotiations.
Matter relating to a particular student.
And a matter relating to a particular student, yeah.
And before we do that, Butch, again, thank you very much for your 28 years of service. As we've seen tonight, that probably wasn't the first time that Butch experienced, you know, a large crowd at our table, but that's where we were able to sit here and discuss everything, and for your staff to pull all that information together, to give us the information that we were asking for, so we could weigh our options. And the students that came to the table to express their concerns, good for them, you know, good for them, that's what, that's what it's about, and, you know, let's hope for, you know, really good weather. WBNG, you know, has a cloud over us unfortunately, but, you know, let's hope for good weather, but yes, thank you for your years of service again, very much appreciate it. All right, we have a motion to go into exact. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. And we're in...